Welcome candidates and audience members to the candidate forum for the Mountain View Los Altos High School District. I am today's moderator, Jan Pepper, with the League of Women Voters Los Altos Mountain View, which is the host of today's event. First, a few housekeeping items. Our forum will last one hour. Due to the nature of a webinar, we can't provide technical assistance to attendees. All forums will be recorded and available on our elections page within two days after each event. L W V L A M V dot org and on our YouTube channel. And the link will be added to the Q and A section. I will remain visible on your screen along with our candidates and the timer app. Audience members are not shown. Please submit any questions about the event through the Q and A. When answered, it will be visible to all attending. The chat will not be turned on. Questions for candidates have been submitted with registrations. We have combined similar questions to be able to cover as wide a range of topics as possible. We don't expect that there will be time to take additional questions for candidates from the audience, but we'll see. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization of women and men that promotes informed, active participation in government. We do not support, oppose, or evaluate political candidates or parties. But after careful study, we do take positions on political issues. The League invites anyone who is interested in supporting democracy and local government to join us. So let me review the format for today's format forum. Each candidate present will make a one-minute opening statement. Questions were selected to be relevant to all candidates and to provide useful information to the audience about issues in this race. Depending on the question, all candidates will be given between, will be given 60 seconds to respond. And then finally, all candidates will each have one minute to make a closing statement. An electronic timer will display each candidate's remaining time and will randomly shuffle the order of candidates responding to each question. And we ask our candidates to abide by the following. First, time limits. When the timer line turns red, I will say, "Thank you." Finish by completing your current sentence. Second, respect. Candidates will not interrupt each other. Third, fairness. Campaign marketing materials will not be visible on the candidate's screen. Five candidates for the school board are present tonight. A sixth candidate, Esmeralda Ortiz, is not able to join us. She has written a two-minute statement combining her opening and closing remarks. I will read that now on her behalf. "I'm sorry I can't be there. At this moment, I am co-presenting with the superintendent of Jefferson Union High School District about the collaborative partnership we've launched this year to help more first-generation students access college. I know many of you understand that our work with youth comes first. If it were anything else, I would be logged on, ready to participate. However, it's my daily work that I believe can make me an effective board member. My career is responding to the needs of students. It's a privilege. My 10 years at Boys and Girls Clubs have been dedicated to closing the opportunity gap and helping students gain the resources and social capital necessary to prepare for their definition of success. As a first-generation Latina and college graduate who attended California's K-12 public schools, I understand the immense responsibility of being well-informed when setting a vision for our students. As such, I've engaged in conversation with current and former MVLA trustees, administration, teachers, parents, students, city council, K-8 district trustees, and community members. Their confidence in my ability to serve MVLA effectively is reflected in their endorsements. MVLA weathered the pandemic and supported students and families with food security and Wi-Fi access, provided training to teachers, and we reworked the bell schedule to meet the unique needs of distance learning. As a full transition to campus continues, MVLA has piloted a new ethnic studies course and further invested in CTE, Career Technical Education Pathways. Campus construction is 75% complete and student wellness a continued focus. I hope to grow upon this work by increasing awareness and access to the preparation needed to pursue diverse post-secondary pathways for all students, addressing the social, emotional, and mental well-being of all students, providing early and deeper community outreach to support all students in a successful transition from middle to high school. Through collaborative work, we can achieve generational success for our, excuse me, for all our students. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for allowing me to share my thoughts today while also upholding my commitment to students." So that was the statement by Esmeralda Ortiz. I will now introduce the five candidates who are with us this evening. Please raise your hand as you are introduced. Theda Corns, Eric Mark, Jackie Tanner, Carol Titus Sombre, and Catherine Vonnigan. Thank you, candidates, for participating in today's forum. So the order of opening statements, questions, and closing statements will be randomized by our electronic timer. So we are ready to begin. Jackie, you go first.
Great. Hi, I'm Jackie Tanner. I have lived in our community for 50 years plus. I have gone through all the local public school systems. I've also gone through, I was a special ed and I went through special ed from kindergarten through eighth grade, and then I was tracked all the way through my senior year of high school. I'm a first-generation college graduate. I'm a first-generation homeowner. I know firsthand how important education is and how important it is to succeed and elevate your family. I now have a freshman in high school at Los Altos High School, my alma mater. And I can say that I am, lastly, I am happily retired here in the Bay Area in Mountain View. It's a hard effort. I worked 10 years at Tesla Motors as a material planner. Lots of stress. I'm going to use those skills from Los Altos to help me with my daughter with Los Altos High School. Oh, I know. So that's Jackie Tanner. Sorry. I'm over.
Hi, I'm Theda. Hi, I'm Theda Corns. I have non-progressive dystonia. You may see me jerk or move around or stumble over words. That's just me. I'm running because I'm committed to ensuring that all our students feel connected, embrace challenges, and thrive. My experience as a disabled Anglo-Burmese immigrant and mother of two drives my decades of public service. My daughter was a high-achieving student at MVLA and my son in MVLA special ed. I served on PTA and site council. I joined the partial tax committee to use my business skills and my MBA. Staff then asked me to join boundaries and facilities committees. I'm most proud that we added three special education classrooms and no additional cost. I'll bring that collaborative, innovative thinking to the board. I've been a member of Sopa One CAC and the League of Women Voters Education Committee and Challenge Team for years. I've observed every board meeting since April. This firsthand knowledge of how the educational experience must adapt to students' needs motivates me to help every student succeed.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Catherine. You're on mute, Catherine.
Hi, I'm Catherine Vonnigan. I'm the current board president. In addition to dealing with COVID, MVLA has accomplished a lot during my four years on the board. I have also 40 years of volunteer experience working with the schools, including as officer in PTAs at the school, city, and county levels, school site councils, as well as with the Red Cross and other nonprofits. I bring experience from an award-winning software engineering career and my EMT background. I have been an IT and safety consultant in MVLA. My son graduated from Mountain View High and now teaches high school chemistry. I would like to stay on the board for calm, consistent, collaborative leadership and engage the community with equity and inclusion and continue excellent academic education, support wellness of everyone, supervise financial and other assets, lead implementation of new programs and future innovation to always improve and be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, you're next.
Hi, I'm Carol Titus Sombre. I was born, raised, and educated in Santa Clara County. I earned my MBA from Santa Clara University in Information Systems and Quantitative Solutions, and I'm a Wolfel Scholarship winner. Subsequently, I worked for 15 years at Fortune 50 Cisco Sun Visa Corporations and as board advisory to high-tech startups. As President Golden Puppy Inc., a state-of-the-art STEM e-learning company, we are internationally recognized for constructively closing the gaps in STEM learning with personalized outcomes for every child. As head coach for the National Youth Volleyball Association, I manage and taught 300 children for the cities of Mountain View, Palo Alto, and Saratoga. All three of my children are scholar athletes that have benefited greatly from the advanced academic and wellness curriculum in the district. It's my goal to have every MVLA student graduate with the 21st century skills they need to thrive by continuously improving the quality of services provided, maximizing learning outcomes, and enhancing community stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric.
Hello, my name is Eric Mark. I'm running for MVLA school board because I believe in a holistic education for our students. One of those issues would be mental health. I know from firsthand experience that is a growing problem, and that's something I'd like to address if I become a board member. I'd also like to have our students become better global citizens. And I think this is very important in our, you know, totally globally-connected world and society that our students are prepared. And one of those pillars for that would be ethnic studies. And I'd like to see the program be supported and improved. And I'd also like to have our students become better skilled in with real world skills such as, you know, digital savviness and basically have our students become more culturally, socially, physically, environmentally better citizens.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, now we will switch to the questions. And the first question for all of you is, what is the district doing well? Where is improvement needed? And what changes would you suggest to make a positive difference? And Carol, you're first.
Yeah, great. I'm glad I got that question because all three of my kids have been very happy to be in the Advanced Scientific Investigations. That's a great program. It's only at Los Altos. I would love to see that grow and morph over into Mountain View. My kids have gained a lot out of it. The kids do actual research. They have to go get a mentor outside of the teachers that support it. So they're already set up for success. I really like it also because this is something that can actually bring the child back into your neighborhood because our economy is based in STEM. What I think we could be improving is the math scores apparently have gone down post-COVID, and I would really like to see those gaps getting closed. Dr. Meyer mentioned that in her board meeting. And I really think that's something that we should be fixing. Not only that, but the lack of labs that occurred over the
Thank you, Carol. Okay. Next up, we have Theda.
Hi, so I think what MVLA is doing well is academic achievement for our top students. It's clearly a very high-achieving score. School, we're also doing well with our ethnic studies. It's an inquiry-based course. We had Dumble, the interest. We are also doing well in terms of retention of teachers. What we could do better is improving our mental health and wellness. 50% of our students now have a mental health issue due to COVID. We could also do better with our social-emotional learning and our students who are in the forgotten middle. We could also do better on the achievement gap and addressing the issues raised by the Spanish-speaking parents, no longer to the board, and ensuring that more low-income students are involved in the MVLA programs that offer mentoring cohorts and study skills.
Thank you. Jackie.
I can't believe the board is doing really well. Looking at the last six videos online on the board, they're just doing a really good job. It was really difficult for me to try to find anything where I was like, "Aha, that can be fixed." So in that regard, they're doing, I feel they're doing really well. Retrain from COVID, they were very responsive regarding bringing the students back in, making sure we had things lined up for health and wellness, so the kids had a place to seek out help. And they've also brought back the ELA program at Los Altos. Things they could do a little bit better, I've been talking with the families in the local area. I feel that the board could communicate better with the citizens, the community in general, and the parents. They feel a little bit separated out, so I believe communication is super key, and that's really easy to fix.
Thank you. Eric.
Hi. I should not have followed Theda because she hit most of my points. However, I would just add to what she mentioned. So the district is doing great as far as course offerings. You can get an AP course in almost anything, and I think it's wonderful. I think they've also done a great job supporting extracurriculars because, you know, my three kids, they've all gone to Mountain View High, and they've just had a wealth of experiences. So I love what the district has helped foster that. But also to Theda's point, I think one of the areas is, again, mental health. And part of that is, you know, fostering a more supportive, encouraging environment instead of when we're in the students, they feel this highly-charged competitive atmosphere. I'm not sure, you know, what as a board member we can do yet, but I'd like to be a part of the team to analyze that.
Thank you. Catherine.
Hi, well, I'm glad people think we're doing a good job. I think we have in the last ones. We get A for academics. We get high points for picking a wonderful superintendent, Dr. Nellie Meyer, in this period. We've increased wellness services. We've increased CTE and alternative options. We've done great with our labor partners, giving 5% salary over a three-year period, a new thing for our district. We've increased applying equity to everything, and we've added the ethnic studies and Yale programs like were mentioned. Plus, we're on budget with our bond building so far. As, and not mentioned, handling COVID. In terms of challenges, wellness, 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 that's true. We need more of that. We need to, as part of that, review equitable grading and homework policies to have people be calmer. And we need to communicate, communicate, and communicate at all levels with all partners.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to our next question. The district has many passionate stakeholders, including teachers and staff, students, and parents. What can the board do to effectively communicate with them? How can it engage these resources in the district planning and decision-making process? And we'll start with Jackie.
Wasn't prepared to start so quickly again. I am hitting the part about communication is really important, and this is true. The latest one offered, offering the school has right now is Parent Square. It's new. Talking to other parents, they like it. And so it's a very good tool. I believe that there needs to be ways to talk to the community more. They may be sending out little flyers, little cards would be a way. Maybe the neighbors in just the local area need to be reminded where they could go on the website to get more information. It's still an issue that needs to be addressed. I know that we have a public information officer who should have more. Maybe he needs more resources to help him with this. I'm not exactly sure just yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol.
Yeah, I think community is a big issue. I think, you know, especially after COVID, I think a lot of people feel disconnected. So the more that we can come together, it's going to help. And, you know, there's several forums that we have that are coming back. And, you know, the board's coming back in onsite, and the PTA is back onsite. We have several other opportunities. I think we can engage like the parents where we could do more reach out to make sure like everybody's feeling connected and as a community because we were so separated. And so that's really a key, you know, a key growing thing. And I think we just need to kind of, you know, celebrate being open again, you know, more sporting things, more fun things to like ease the tensions and the anxieties.
Thank you. Catherine.
Okay, well, I think as in with instruction, we need to use all modes of communication to reach our constituents because people, as in learning, also communicate differently. Some people prefer email compared to webinars compared to Facebook and so on. So that's one. We've started some things like webinars during COVID. Those are going well. We have the lectures we have in the evening sponsored by the foundation PTAs. We have the Family Partnership Council, which works with all different partners. We have Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram accounts. We have student conferences that the superintendent has. I hope to have more study sessions this next term on the board to address issues with the public. And the other is for the board and everybody involved to keep their ear to the ground to hear what people want to know, make sure to tell them.
Thank you. Eric.
Hi. I think the district has done a great job of the outreach aspect. Again, like what was mentioned, the parent lectures and all the communications from the principal, you know, tips and and all the various board meetings. But, okay, so having been a parent for 12 years, you know, it's how do you engage the parents? And through, you know, maybe through focus groups or community events. But I think as parents, we all know that we're all very busy. And as long as our kids are doing well, we tend to think that all is well. And so it's a matter of, you know, maybe just coming up with different topics, hot topics that, you know, will engage parents more. But I think the lines of communication have been, have been great. And so we just need to, I think, come up with those topics that will really engage the parents.
Thank you. Theda.
Before I decided to run, I did a listening tour where I met with many of the constituencies at MVLA. I've asked everyone to engage in an ongoing dialogue. I consider fostering partnerships and understanding the needs of my community an important part of being an elected official. So the feedback I got was that parents are, have a lot of communication, but it is, they often feel overwhelmed. I hope that Parent Square will help address some of this. But a lot of people outside of the community, outside of parents, are not really aware of what the board is doing. I think there are some simple fixes that could be done, like having the meeting sent out to people rather than having you go to the website. I also think we need to deepen and foster partners with all MVLA's partners, including our K-8 district, city council, Santa Clara County, and others, and leverage them to broadcast the message out to other members of the community.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now go to our third question. Improving equity in educational opportunities and performance is important to the district. MVLA's definition of equity is adapted from the National Equity Project. Equity means that each child receives what they need to reach their full academic and social potential. What does equity mean to you? And what can you and the board do to be part of the solution? And we will start with Theda.
To me, equity means that everyone gets what they need, which can be different for each person. So I will talk about the achievement gap because I think that's where we're So first of all, we need to increase low-income student enrollment for the MVLA programs that offer mentoring cohorts and study schools. That's Abbott for the four-year college, middle college, community college, Alta Vista vocational training. Need to assess known struggling students before the school year starts so they get help immediately rather than waiting for them to fall behind. Need to ensure issues raised by Spanish-speaking parents in a letter to the board are being addressed. And we need to increase enrollment in the parenting class for Spanish-speaking parents developed by Spanish-speaking parents. Need to use state career pathways to give all students life skills and to show students regardless of socioeconomic status, the need to choose the career path that's right for them. And we need to reduce the class size to the premise size of 20. This helps all students.
Thank you, Theda. And next up, we have Eric.
So equity in education, it means that, again, all students, you know, regardless of their income level, their English speaking ability, their, you know, off-the-charts mental prowess that, you know, that we try to, I mean, and again, with a district this large, it is difficult to provide a lot of, you know, the unique, you know, programs for all the kids, but, you know, we must endeavor. I think the, what we need to work on is identifying some of these needs earlier in the process. So we, I think we need to better coordinate with the middle schools and, you know, have counselors from the middle schools, working with counselors at the high school level. And, you know, so we have, you know, as the pipeline comes in, you know, we have better ways to identify, you know, those students that do have some of those unique either skills or challenges.
Thank you. Carol.
Yeah, that's a great question. I think there's several ways we can address equity issues. You know, we're living in a, an environment where we have million-dollar homes and disadvantaged students, and it's not acceptable. And there's definitely ways to address it. So I like to take the model in part of the Advanced Science Investigations because that's, I think, a really great model long-term. It has these long-term effects because the kids have to not only do research and have a point of talking with a mentor, but they actually have to find a mentor outside. So it sets them up not only for like university, but, you know, career path later. And of course, you know, this could be all tied into the Abbott peak. I think the peak could use more of this mentoring and would be very beneficial to the kids that are, you know, at risk.
Thank you. Catherine.
Well, equity is people get what they need, not the same as everybody else. So what a socio-economically challenged person would need? Support so that they can get their homework done and so on. So grading and homework practices can So that they can get their homework done and, and so on. So grading and homework practices can help in these sort of things. On the other hand, a student that is an AP student with lots of resources also needs to get what they need and to be challenged. Or to have ways that they can advance on their own or whatever. And we need to start, for some students, think outside, outside of school day. Maybe we need some evening study sessions or tutorial sessions or whatever, where people can come when they have another opportunity. And then of course innovate, innovate with additional alternative programs with more CTE, with more language support at different levels. And differentiate the education for the different levels.
Thank you. And Jackie.
Great. So really good answers there. I really do believe that we. Are trying to, as a school district, reach out to address all the different needs. There's a lot of needs. I think one area that would be the focus to catch these people or kids, sorry. Is the transition from our feeder schools, seventh and eighth grade into the high schools. That's when the need is the greatest. The kids are new. They're not. Mentally ready for high school. I think that's where we can capture the, their, the weaknesses and help bring them up to the next level.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we will go to our fourth question. Students have experienced a dramatic increase in mental health problems. Due to the lingering effects of COVID disruption, academic stress and other factors. What is the district already doing to address this problem and what else can be done? And we will start with Catherine.
Well, over the last four years, I mean, I've advocated for this, we've added social workers. We've doubled the size of the therapy group. We've changed around some of the counseling ideas. We've added professional development to help teachers understand trauma-informed situations and stuff like that. We always, we could always use more of those kind of resources. It's, it's not an easy problem, but we need to also share more with our, our resources like check and, and the like. But we can also do some things like the, regarding equity, like I already mentioned, homework and grading and so on. And counseling to not have students so stressed out about what their path is, be it CTE or trying to get into Harvard. So that all students can kind of level out and enjoy each other without. Making everybody else be the same as them.
Well, I agree with what trustee Vonnegut has said. But it is a big problem because COVID has exacerbated the mental health crisis. According to MBLA's own productions, half of students have a mental health issue, which can range from, I need to talk to a trusted adult. To feel better to suicidal ideation. And according to an ACL report, 70 to 80% of youth receive their mental services from schools. And this is personal for me because I have family members who have dealt with severe depression with professional help. And I think we need to work in partnership with Santa Clara County, which has created 19 health and wellness centers, including in high schools. As, as trustee Vonnegut mentored, deepen partnerships to provide better resources for students in crisis. And help identify more students who are having mental health issues. And also MBLA has an influx of English language learners fleeing COVID-19. Who are living with a foster family and MBLA says all of experienced trauma are only in special ed.
Thank you. Jackie. Jackie, you're on mute.
Sorry. I believe we should be giving, the first would be to give the resources and more education to the teachers. They're the ones who see our children day in and day out. So they're the ones that I would like. For them to be able to see that a child's changed from day to day and might need to reach out for more help. In regards to doing something that's. To help the kids from the kid's standpoint, a simple and economical thing is to have the kids have those emergency numbers. On their phones or on the back of their ID cards. My daughter's card is blank. It's a great blank piece of paper where it could just say, use, call these numbers if you're. Two AM in the morning and you're lost and you're scared. So I do feel that we're doing a good job. There is lots of opportunity to do better. And they don't have to be really expensive to do so.
Thank you. Carol.
Yeah, as far as the, the health and the wellness, I mean, and kids have been kind of cooped up quite a bit. So I know to de-stress for myself, I like to do exercise. And I think a lot of people have been inside and like, even when I'm programming, there's this joke among gamers, you know, go touch the grass. Get outside and it's actually, you know, been shown. You know, scientifically to be very therapeutic. And, and so I would definitely like boost up the athletics. I think that's an important thing. Of course, you know, you want to make sure like you're supporting all the social services and making sure that people are well aware of them. And that the kids feel comfortable talking about that with a trusted adult. Hopefully that's a teacher or counselor. Or someone close to them, other than their parents.
Yeah, thank you. And Eric.
So the district, they've, they're going to be building wellness centers at the two main high schools. And they have, you know, the association with check. And, you know, so those are great measures. They're staffing up as, as Catherine mentioned. But the fact that we're having to staff up and, you know, have all these other measures. I, I think is actually not addressing the problem. The problem is how do we, you know, de-escalate all this tension and stress on the students. And so again, you know, it's a problem that we're having to keep staffing up. Whereas, you know, if we could, you know, take some policy measures, maybe capping APs. Getting rid of weighted GPAs or maybe capping the number of APs that you can wait, go to your GPA. You know, some little policy measures like that. And then just increase the student engagement. So like, you know, for example, with ethnic studies, kids, you know, learning about, you know, you know, their heritage. And, you know, that again, will just increase their engagement in their education.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to question number five. Please discuss MBLA's budget, including structure, funding sources, et cetera. Are funds being used wisely? Are there areas you would cut and then redirect funds to another area? And we will start with Eric.
So. So as Catherine has mentioned, the district has done a great job with budgeting. We're projected to have excesses in the next two or three years. If I read the budget report, then. You know, reading a budget report can be very interesting, but as far as, you know, areas that we could cut. You know, again, with, with a budget excess, it's hard to say that we've misspent or misappropriated funds. So I'd have to dig a little deeper, but into areas that we could direct. I think as Jackie mentioned, I'd like to see more training for teachers around, you know, how, how, how we can better support the students. You know, identifying, you know, you, potential mental health issues, you know, with our students. And just to, you know, provide better, you know, class management, you know, for our teachers.
Thank you. Catherine.
Well, our budget for this year is in excess of $125 million, of which most of it comes from property taxes. We are a basic aid district and we get a majority of the funds from the property taxes. We do have some additional money for special ed, but not anywhere near enough to cover. The mandated requirements in that category. And we have some COVID funds still from the emergency funds to help us recover from COVID and so on. One area that we're, we work on constantly is how to keep our special ed funding. Under control because it takes more than 10% of our budget while giving the services the students need. And bringing them in-house and also having this children in the most unrestricted environment. For their particular special ed situation.
Thank you. Jackie.
So I've been looking at the budgets. Wow, those are pretty long lengthy items there. From what I'm seeing, I wouldn't say there's anything flagrantly wasted. I've. The board looks at it all the time. It's looked at. A lot. So there's nothing there that I'd say. What the heck are they doing with the money? But if I'm on the board, I plan to continue to watch, just to make sure that doesn't happen. So in, what would you do with the money that's left over right now? I believe we are trying to have a surplus on purpose. For the rainy day fund. It's important not to just spend it because we have it. So I think as a board member, I would pay attention to the needs of the students and the community. And just hold the money until we see an actual need, but I think we're doing a good job right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Eda.
Yes, I have an MBA from UC Berkeley that I earned while working full-time as a director in a high-tech tech company. I keep a close eye on the budget. I believe a budget is a statement of values. I think on the whole, they're doing a good job. What I would spend more money on is, as mentioned, professional development for teachers, especially in terms of. Spun rings students with mental health issues and also special education. With mentioned, it is a very difficult problem to find enough funding for that. I also noticed there are only two college counselors per school. I think that is something I would want to look into a little further because I think our first gen students probably need more help. Oh, and then also I think, you know, we are building these mental health and wellness centers. But furnishing them and figuring out what to put in them is going to be expensive. That's why I say we need to work in, in with Santa Clara County, but I also think it's going to cost money.
Thank you. And Carol.
Yeah, so. From what I've heard from the board meetings, the budget is on track, which is good. And we do have very good. A tax base. So I don't think we have to worry too much long-term on that. And, you know, as far as any excesses. I'd like to see that to grow the STEM and really educate the kids. And like I said, move the ASI over to Mountain View and add some staff with that. I think that would be a great addition to the district and then close those gaps. In, in the math scores and that will benefit homeowners. It will also benefit the children, right? Because, you know, long-term, that's, you know, we want to maximize their outcomes.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will go to our sixth question. California has mandated that an ethnic studies class be part of high school graduation requirements by 2025. MBLA is piloting an electric version, elective version of the class this year. Can you please share your thoughts on this addition to the curriculum, including its content, implementation? And how to communicate this change to a naturally sensitive, diverse community? And please go into as much detail as you can. We will start with Carol.
Yeah, so I'm, I love the fact that we have this extra offering and that it's going to be tied into the standards. That's really important. And of course, you, you need to make sure like when you're in, your curriculum and your implementation match. Cause if one's off, you're not going to be productive. And if you're not, that's not even talking about equality, upping the quality of the conversation in the classroom or with individual students. I think there's a risk of it being. Diversive and. So you have to make sure, like, I'm glad we're doing a pilot to make sure like we're getting all the kinks out. To me, this is the dessert. I really would like to focus on getting the math scores back up and moving forward with the STEM.
Thank you. Eric.
So ethnic studies is very important to me. I've volunteered with the Stop API group. And they've identified ethnic studies as, you know, one of the most important things we can do for our high schools. To, you know, improve the environment, not just for Asians, but for, for everyone. And so I'm a big proponent. The, it's under leadership for our district from Dr. Julie Yick. And I think that's a fantastic starting point. We need to, you know, the importance of ethnic studies is, you know, one, developing empathy amongst our students. Increasing engagement with, you know, the whole, you know, breadth of our, our student diversity. And I think the thing that we need to be careful as, as guiding through this is, you know, it's, it's not CRT. You know, the two get conflated, but they're absolutely, you know, not one in the same. So I think as long as we message that, you know, some of the divisiveness that Carol mentioned, I, I think, you know, can definitely be, you know, squelched.
Thank you. Jackie.
So the ethnic studies group is, or studies area is required by the government and we are doing the pilot program this year. One of the things that I saw with my freshman was that she had to make the choice. She could either do ethnic studies or she could do the general history. And I would like to make sure that in the future we are able to offer it. So she can pick it up at a later time. Right now, we're not offering it to the other grade levels, so. That's my only key item there. I think we need to make sure that if we're going to do it, we need to do it and allow other students to get that information as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine.
Okay, so yes, we have the ethnic studies pilot led by Dr. Julie Yick. And it's going great. It's based on themes, modules of themes rather than by group. Ethnic groups. And I think that's a great way to do it. It's more on the constructive side. If you've studied a little bit about ethnic studies compared to the critical side of, that some people purport. We're not that fond of some of the ones that have come out at the state level. And that's why we're doing our own. And it's very popular this year. It's double the amount of students that wanted to take it than we were anticipating at first. And we even ended up with a waiting list because we couldn't accommodate all the students. And pretty soon it will be a permanent class for a year long, mostly with the freshmen. And one concern that some people have, including me, is how can we offer it to upperclassmen that never went through school at that time?
Thank you.
So I strongly support ethnic studies as what Ms. Vonnegut mentioned, double student interest. I agree with the purpose of the course to create empathy, connection and solidarity among students of all backgrounds. And develop critical thinking and civic engagement skills. A dedicated team of students or teachers have spent over a year developing the course. The controversy about ethnic studies will be covered in the course. It's an inquiry-based course, not teachers telling students what to think. Likes, like trustee Vonnegut, I agree with this thematic approach. It also develops academics' skills, including critical thinking, writing, reading, research and public thinking. You learn how to participate thoughtfully and in informed way in civic discourse and in honor democracy with empathy and respect. And learn how to pursue actions of change and solidarity with others through civic engagement. So this is taken from the course. So this is taken from the course. And I think if people actually read this, I think most people would want to take the course.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to our last question. Now, we're going to end up going a couple of minutes over. But our first, our last question is, can you please ask and answer a question about a topic you wish we had asked you about? So we will start with Eric.
So I'm the guinea pig. Question that we wish that you had asked. I guess the, I guess the question that I would like to have been asked is, now you really got me. You guys did a great job. I would say, what, you know, what resources, you know, that we can provide for the teachers? And I think one of the things that we, you know, probably need to do better is, I know we have a lot of teacher staff training and I forgot what those days are called, but I think we need to improve the level of collaboration of the teachers within, you know, given departments so that, you know, they can, you know, plan, you know, it's like within, say, the chemistry department that, you know, the standards of grading and difficulty of tests and so forth is more uniformed. I think we're just, you know, providing more of that.
Thank you.
So first of all, I will say that I agree with others that I think we need to coordinate better with our K through eight districts. But the question I wish you had asked was about a third high school. I know that this is a complex issue, having served on the facilities committee. But I also know the board has already begun negotiations to build a third high school. I don't know the details because these negotiations are closed session, but M V L A has increasing enrollment. It will likely be north of Bay Shore because that's where they have open land. We need to negotiate with Google and other landowners. We need to have a strategic plan and a budget that increases, incorporates the rising costs of construction. And I have relations with city council and Google and other large businesses due to my decades of community service, including with the Chamber of Congress. And I need more community input and understanding of the negotiations before I publicly state my opinion of the type of high school. But I'm open to another high school that has a particular specialty.
Thank you. Carol.
Yeah, so I agree with Tilda. I think the next thing, besides the short-range planning for me, I would love to get the A S I going. And then the long term is definitely looking at the site planning for a third school. I'm from this area. I went to Peterson Wilcox and these schools were built for a thousand kids. Now they're, we're up to twenty-two hundred in each school. That's with the remodel, we're at max capacity. So I want to look at the numbers and see what's going for our population. But certainly, if there's big plans with Google to hire more people, then we have to have another school over in Mountain View, definitely. And figure out a site, figure out a plan and share it with the community and make sure that everybody's on board.
Thank you. Jackie.
One thing I was hoping you guys were going to ask was, what are our platforms? What are the things that we're going to be trying to focus on in our time on the board? And I have three areas, two areas. I was very mixed. One is preparing our students to make sure that we can support the oncoming growth. Yes, we are looking for properties and such. Fiscal responsibility and transparency with the numbers. And to improve the communication between the students that are currently here, the students that are coming here and the community. There's a lot of lack of knowledge of what's going on outside the school for that. The other area is better prepare our eighth graders to come into the high schools. I want to ensure academic, emotional, and mental and physical wellness by giving the teachers more education and training and resources to ensure our kids have the proper, complete, full toolbox by the time they graduate from eighth grade coming out.
Thank you. Thank you. And Catherine.
Well, my question would be, what does the future look like? And as several people have already mentioned, is a third high school. So let them have answered that. I mean, also in terms of the student, the twenty-first century citizen that we are trying to raise. And along those lines, we're working on a graduate profile with our family engagement council on the attributes, not only academic and knowledge-based, but personal and mental health-wise and wellness and empathy and the things that go with ethnic studies and those sort of things as well as we're going to be using more things online in conjunction within seat training. And I would like to see innovation and different alternative programs to address the needs of all different students in many different ways and research and innovate with those.
Thank you. Okay, we are done with all of our questions. Thank you all for your thoughtful answers. And now we're ready to go to the closing statement. So you will each have one minute to make your closing statement. And who is going to go first? It looks like Catherine.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I would like to stay on the board and continue a calm, consistent, and collaborative leadership with whoever else joins us from this group and Sanjay and Phil to engage the community, as I said, with equity and inclusion and continue our excellent education and to improve wellness and to supervise our finances and to implement new programs and future innovation, which I'm real excited about. And look me up on www.vonnie.org for more information. That's where you'll find tons of background and other information and other ideas. I wanted to mention one more thing about mental health from earlier is that we're working on a universal screening tool to give students continually so that we can monitor even at the classroom level our students and get them help as soon as we can. And so vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Theta.
Thank you for your time and to leave and to my fellow candidates for running. I'm also on the lead board, but I'm taking a leave of absence because I'm running for office. My decades of community service, including district committees, my business experience, my MBA from U C Berkeley will be of great value to the board. As I mentioned, I went on a listening tour. And my priorities are improving mental health and wellness, academic achievement of all students regardless of circumstances and fiscal responsibility of transparency. I'm honored by the endorsements of Anna Eshu, Josh Becker, Mark Berman, school board members, and city councils from all the areas M V L A serves and other leaders in our community. And please feel free to contact me. Please go to W W W Theta for M V L A for more information. I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric.
Hi, I have twenty years of experience in volunteering at the elementary, middle, and high school levels and also being a youth sports coach. And mentor tutor connections. I've tutored seventh and eighth graders at Graham and Crittenton. And also through M T C, I have mentored high school students, including one that just recently graduated from the University of Portland and to the M V L A scholars. And so plus, I've been a volunteer teacher at Street Code Academy, a East Palo Alto-based organization teaching STEM to the unsure communities. So I think along having three kids, having gone through, you know, Mountain View High School, you know, I have the insight and understanding into the needs of our students and the challenges of education, educating our diverse population. In addition, as an engineer and computer systems integrator, I'm able to analyze problems and develop, you know, systematically develop solutions. I would apply these experiences and skills to improve an already great school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie.
Thank you for having us event. I am new to the public office. That means that I don't have any special interests, have a fresh and independent perspective. Remember, I'm retired, so I have the time and the energy to take on the tasks being on the board. I'm also don't plan on being here for just for four years. I'm young and energetic. I'll be here for the eight years or the twelve years, as long as somebody's, they're willing to vote me into the position. Please put a mother on the board. If you would like more information about me, please go and look up Jackie Tanner for m v l a dot org. Thank you.
Thank you. And Carol.
With fifteen years of corporate board experience, MBA from Santa Clara University, I will protect the quality of educational and financial health of M V L A. With eleven years of a community service, including six years as a Girl Scout leader, one year as a Los Altos High School J V volleyball coach, and as a National Association volleyball coach. I'm a proven advocate for student wellness and my mission is always student success. It would be an honor and privilege to serve the community in this capacity. And I thank you and Vance for your time and consideration. And if you want any, get in touch with me. My email is carol@titanesombre for m v l a at gmail dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this concludes our forum. I would like to thank the candidates for participating and the volunteers who have made this forum possible. The League of Women Voters believes that a democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. And we hope that the insights you have gained from this forum will help in planning your vote. To look at a personalized ballot with information about your candidates and ballot initiatives, please visit the Voters Edge website at votersedge.org after you receive your ballot this week or next week. Voters Edge also provides information about major donors for candidates and initiatives. When this forum closes, our webpage will appear. Please visit our webpage to see our election events and links to recordings of forums that have already occurred. For the November eighth election, please vote early and deposit your signed ballot in a ballot drop box or mailbox as soon as possible. And thank you for helping make our democracy work.